Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this evening's Ram Board of Education meeting. We will start with roll call. And I'll call out your names and you can chime in if you're present. Stephanie Bancroft.
Stephanie Bancroft, Andover.
Kathleen, I see you. I think you're muted, Kathleen. I'm back, I see her on our list. Jessica Dapsis.
Jessica Dapsis from Hebron.
Lori Blake.
Lori Blake, Andover.
Mary Kuchewski.
Mary Kuchewski, Marlboro.
Vin Colonna.
Vin Colonna, Hebron.
Joe O'Connor.
Joe O'Connor, Hebron.
Sue Stolphy.
Sue Stolphy, Marlboro.
Rob Shattle.
Rob Shattle, Hebron.
Jean Wilson. And our two student reps, Dana. Dana, I know I saw you earlier. There you are.
Yeah, she's here. She just told me that she was having some internet issues.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lily. And we have Lily?
Yep.
Thank you. And Kathleen Goodwin, are you back with us?
I'm here. I'm on my phone this evening. I'm having trouble with internet. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. And Jean Wilson, Jean, did I see you?
Yep, I'm here.
Great, thank you. And I'm Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent. And I believe for administrative representation, we have Eva Gallup, our Business Manager.
Eva Gallup, Business Manager.
Eva. And I think Michael Cerusi.
I'm here, Michael Cerusi, Principal at Ran Middle School.
And Dr. Briskel.
I'm here.
Right. Thank you, guys. So can we stand for the pledge, please? One sec, let me let someone in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first order of business this evening is to take nominations for the Board Chair. Just for anyone who may not have been to a December meeting, each year, the Board, either following the November elections or after the officers have served for the year, go through elections at each December's Board meeting. Are there any nominations for Chairperson of the Board?
Scott, this is Kathleen. I nominate Stephanie Bancroft to continue to serve as Board Chair.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Do I hear any other nominations?
This is Jessica. I would like to second that nomination for Stephanie.
Great, thank you, Jessica. Are there any other nominations for Chairperson? Okay, hearing none. I will open up either for discussion or if you'd like to go directly to a vote.
I think we're okay to go to a vote, Scott. I'd like to just let everybody know that I'm recommending Stephanie. It's part of my discussion is that she's been organized. She did a great job of keeping us together this year. It's been really tough during the pandemic and the transition to a new Board Chair unexpectedly. I think she's done a great job.
Okay, great. So I'll go down the list and if you could please either yea or nay. Kathleen Goodwin?
Yes.
Jessica Dapsis?
Yes.
Lori Blake?
Yes.
Judy Clark?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
But Scott, I don't think we have to vote when it's when there's no other candidate.
Well, since we started, let's finish it up. Can't get, no one can go back at me on that one. Mary Kuchewski?
Yes.
Vin Colonna?
Yes.
Joe O'Connor?
Yes.
Sue Stolphy?
Yes.
Rob Shattle?
Yes.
Jean Wilson?
Yes.
Stephanie Bancroft?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Now that you are back in the chair seat, I'll let you take over from here.
Okay, are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Kathleen Goodwin.
Second in by Joe.
Okay, are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, would we like to go to? There are no other nominations, correct? So at this point, I believe we can appoint Kathleen as Vice Chair. Thank you, Kathleen, for serving again.
My privilege.
Okay, our next vote is for Secretary.
I would like to nominate Sue Rappley for Secretary for the reason in my nomination that we are a regional board. We have a Chair from Andover, a Vice Chair from Hebron, and I have many commitments, so I'm not interested in an office. And Sue is one of the longest-serving committee members. So that towns are all represented is why I'm voting Sue.
Sue, do you accept the nomination?
She's not seconded. Yeah, it's got to be seconded. You've got to see if there are other nominations and seconds, Stephanie.
All right, I just want to make sure that's okay with Sue. Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Is there a second?
I'll nominate Rob Shattle since he's the Acting Secretary, correct?
Yes, he is. Right, at this point, he is.
I really, I know maybe I'm not supposed to talk, but we have not followed Robert's rules all night. Marlboro needs some representation, my Hebron friends.
Okay, do we have a second for Sue?
This is Jessica, I second Sue.
And do we have a second for Rob?
This is Kathleen, I'll second for Rob.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay, do we have any discussion other than?
Yeah, I think the world of Rob Shattle. He's one of the smartest people I know. I see people smiling, but I'm serious. Rob, you know people better than anyone. It has nothing to do with that. We're a regional board. There are conversations about cost savings. Marlboro folks are, you know, if you've been talking to them, they're not as thrilled as everybody right now. And I just think it's smart to do. And Sue has a proven track record. I think it's for goodwill on the board.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, I think, this is Joe. I think it's only fair that you have an incumbent. So you should nominate your incumbent and it's for discussion. Rob has the choice to accept. Sue has a choice to accept. So it's just giving us a little bit more variety. I hear Judy loud and clear, but it's just, I think, out of courtesy for the incumbents. That's all.
I don't disagree, but I know that Hebron wasn't happy when they didn't have anyone in one of the offices. So I just share that for everybody to reflect since we're trying to be cooperative.
I want to weigh in. This is Jean with Judy, same thing. I think it's important only in the sense that I have heard town officials sometimes refer to this as Hebron High School, and they don't mean it kindly.
Very much so. And I'm not even sure, with all due respect to the rest of you, that you're even aware of that, and that's scary.
Okay, now I'm going to ask Sue, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
And Rob, do you accept yours?
No.
Okay. So now we have one nominee, and that is Sue, since Rob has declined. So at this point, are there any other nominations? If there aren't, then we can appoint Sue as Secretary? I think Judy and Jean make a very good point as far as the distribution of the towns and the officers.
And I think Rob should get Most Valuable Player or something on our board. No, honestly, Rob, your grace and class is, Vinnie, I can see you. Your grace and class are exemplary. Vinnie, you talk, I can talk too.
Okay, so if there's, if there is no other discussion or we are ready to appoint Sue as Secretary? Because she's going? Because she's the only nominee? Okay?
I'm here for Treasurer.
Thank you, Sue, for accepting the position of Secretary. All right, now the position of Treasurer. Are there any nominations for Treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Mary Kuchewski for Treasurer.
Who is our Acting Treasurer?
Acting Treasurer is Jessica Dapsis.
Well, Joe, going on your logic, just to keep everything where it's at, I'll nominate Jessica Dapsis.
Thanks, Judy.
I tried to throw a curveball there, you caught me, Judy. It's like, okay, reverse psychology.
No, well, I swear to you, I love Rob Shattle. I think he's the greatest person on the planet. So it has nothing to do with that. It's that we have a regional board. That was all.
Judy, you didn't hurt my feelings at all. No problem.
Okay.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second for Mary Kuchewski?
I'll second for Mary. This is Vin.
Do we have a second for Jessica Dapsis?
I'll second for Jessica Dapsis.
Okay. Mary, do you accept your nomination for Treasurer?
Actually, I appreciate being nominated, but I think I'd like to get a little bit more experience on the board before I take on that position.
Okay. Jessica, do you accept your nomination for Treasurer?
I do.
Okay.
I feel like I just got married right there. I do.
Is there any discussion?
No, but I think, thank you, everyone, for making sure it's a regional representation. And as Joe said, I think there was a fair point there.
Okay. So because Jessica has gone uncontested, we will, we are appointing Jessica Dapsis as Treasurer. All right, thank you, everybody, for the elections. We're going to go on. I'd like to appoint a timekeeper for this evening's meeting. Is there anyone who's volunteering to be the timekeeper? Anybody have a watch on? Joe, you will? Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, what are we timekeeping?
To keep, try to keep the meeting on track tonight as far as time.
Okay, because normally, the agenda has the times next to it, and I don't see that here this time. So that's, to me, that would make it hard to keep time.
I have times. Oh. On the right-hand side, you don't have them, Sue?
No, no. Does everyone else have it? Because I copied, I printed it from the link that I have. So I don't know. Does everyone else have times there?
I don't have times.
Yeah. No, I think Jan referred to that in one of her emails that she wasn't putting the times next to. But maybe you have a different copy, Stephanie.
Yeah, I think she's, I think she sent one to the Board with times, and then the one posted in the public folder did not.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I printed from the public folder, so that was my mistake. Okay.
Actually, I don't have that one, Stephanie. I thought we were staying times, meaning like the three-hour limit. So I'm getting close to that. But I can, I'll pull that up. I can still do the time unless somebody else has it there.
Okay. All right. At this time, we're going to public comments. Are there any public comments this evening?
Can I have a public comment? Stephanie, it's Kathleen.
Sure, Kathleen.
I just want to thank the Ram Music and Art Department. I had the privilege of watching The Winter Warmer with the children's artwork with instruments and vocals. And I just want to thank them for putting the effort in and providing that to the community. It was awesome, and I know that was a lot of work. So I just want to thank them for that.
All right, are there any other public comments? Thank you, Kathleen. No? Okay, we'll be moving on to additions and deletions to agenda items. Are there any additions or deletions at this point? I'm hearing none. Okay, we'll turn it over to our student representatives for the reports.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to touch on a couple things that I was hearing from the student body. So there was like a software that was incorporated into like the Chrome extension a couple weeks ago called Securely, which like allowed teachers to like see students' screens. And nobody really liked that. They sort of thought it was like an invasion of their privacy, like being able to see their screen. Another thing, I know that our like deal with Zoom is going to like expire in December or January or something like that, and we'll have to go to Google Meets. At least, that's what the teachers have been telling us. And Zoom is actually a way better software than Google Meets is. And although I know like the package is expensive and we have like some sort of deal with Google because we have like Classroom Gmail, students think it would really be worth it for us to use Zoom instead of Google Meets because it worked a lot better with bad internet connection. And it's just overall like better quality software. And so we just think that, like, we don't really know what's going to happen. We don't know if we're going to be virtual for the rest of the year or whatever. But Zoom is way better than Google Meets, and it would be a lot harder for us to convert to all like Google Meets. So yeah, that's what I got, right?
I'm going to echo what Lily said. The issue most students had with Securely was the fact that it wasn't just working on our school computers. It was also working on our personal computers because it was through our Gmail account. And a lot of students felt that that was a violation of our personal privacy. And then also with Zoom, I'm on my Chromebook right now. I just had to switch computers because my Mac, Google Meets don't work. And I'm pretty sure, I'm not positive, but I think my audio is lagging pretty bad because Google Meets really haven't been working for a lot of people. So I would also recommend that we try to stick with Zoom if possible. Yeah, that's about all we have right now. Seniors are starting to get into college. But overall, those are the main things that Lily touched on.
Great. If I could just chime in, we certainly have heard a lot about both of those, Securely in particular. So right now, for Zoom, we're still waiting to hear from Zoom. So Zoom, we're hoping is going to extend it through the year. So we're really waiting for them to know what it is that they're going to allow us to do. So hopefully, we'll have good news for everybody when we're back in January. On Securely, it's a program that a lot of schools have, you know, used or used. And it allows teachers to see what students are doing on their screens. The intent is it's not a spyware so much as wanting to make sure that students are engaged. And particularly when you have a lot of students who are remote, if you don't see what it is on their screen, you don't know whether they're with you or whether they're, you know, maybe watching a movie or something. So I think we all agreed that particularly at the high school, it was a, we didn't roll it out anywhere nearly as well as we could. And so it created a lot of frustration, I think, a lot of mistrust. So we're going to go back to the drawing board on that completely, particularly at the high school, so that we can. And I know that Dr. Briskel reached out and spoke to a number of students to see if we're going to move forward with it, what would it take to make it work? And how could it be used? As opposed to providing, or giving students a sense that we're watching them when we're really not. But both concerns, we've certainly heard loud and clear.
Thank you, Dana and Lily. All right, Board Chair report. The winter vacation is always a milestone for the school year, and we'd like to wish the administration, staff, and students a safe and restful vacation. And as I'd like to reiterate what Kathleen was saying earlier, congratulations to the music and art departments of the high school and middle school for their Winter Warmer 2020. The presentation was a wonderful showcase for our talented artists and musicians. So it was a really enjoyable evening Friday night. So, and that's it, short and sweet.
Great.
All right, Scott, I'm going to turn over to you.
Thank you. So, you know, unfortunately, COVID continues to dominate pretty much our waking hours. And things have, things have changed. Some things have stayed the same, then some things have changed. You know, right now, we remain in remote learning through this Wednesday. And just to give you some idea in terms of some of the numbers that we're seeing, even when we're in on hybrid, you know, as I think I've mentioned along the way that we have had families that have chosen to keep their students remote. Right now, out of the 395 middle school students, we have 70 students who are choosing to be remote. So even when we're in hybrid, those students are learning remotely. So that's about 18% of the middle school. And at the high school, we have 123 students who are learning remotely. Out of 896, that's about 14% of our high school students. And I know I've talked about some of the highlights of both our hybrid program and our remote program. What I really want to focus on this evening is some of the challenges that we're certainly recognizing. And, you know, I think the longer that this year goes on, either in a hybrid mode or in a remote mode, these are all significant issues that we are and will need to and are tackling. We, at each of the schools, we have approximately 30 students who really are pretty disengaged. So we know that not having the opportunity to be in the building every day definitely has an impact on, has an impact on all of us, whether you're a teacher, a staff member, a student, or a parent. And we are finding that students are definitely feeling disconnected from their peers. They're feeling disconnected from their teachers. We know that we're seeing more students than normal who may be failing classes. Students, and I think it's safe to say, teachers as well, are experiencing screen fatigue. Makes it difficult day after day after day to pop yourself in front of the screen. And we know that we're seeing more students than normal who are experiencing anxiety and/or depression issues. One of the challenges that we've had is it can be a real struggle to connect with the students that we feel are in most need of connecting with us. And we're also finding that it can be difficult to engage with parents as well. You know, again, this is, this is new to us all. It's disorienting and disruptive to us all. And so, you know, some of our students are certainly challenged with it more than others. Our goal certainly would be to be in school as much as we can. And our hope is that following the upcoming break on January 4th, we'll be able to reengage with our hybrid model. We've all along been careful not to cancel school or go remote because we felt it was the safe thing to do. Instead, we've made that decision when we didn't have another option. We didn't have enough staff to safely monitor all the students in the building. Or in a couple of cases, we had too many positive cases of students. And so therefore, the quarantining required us to close for a few days. So, you know, you'll see a lot of schools across the state have already announced that they're shutting down either through that first week of January, the second week of January. And we're hopeful that we will be able to be back on the 4th. In the meantime, we know that we can't simply wait for the kids to come back into the building to address some of these challenges that I've expressed. To give you an idea of some of the initiatives that we've put into place, at the high school, Dr. Briskel's created a student reentry group, which is kind of aligned with their principal's advisory, who meet to get suggestions, recommendations from students in terms of how to improve student experiences through the year. The high school has implemented a virtual kindness wall to try to help spread some positive vibes amongst the students. As I said, we know that we have students that aren't engaging. And both at the middle school and at the high school level, we're using Sergeant Rivera, our SRO, to make house calls. And he's not making those calls as a officer of the law looking to provide trouble. He's looking to instead make those calls as a compassionate member of our community, reaching out to the kids and hopefully helping us to reengage with those. Both the high school and the middle school, we're inviting parents and students, particularly those who are having challenges, either attending classes or with grades, to virtual meetings as much as we can. Both schools are sending out weekly notices to keep people up to date in terms of what is happening, what they can expect, and why we're making some of the decisions we're making. The high school counselors have put together virtual meetings for parents and students, particularly for those students who are struggling academically. So we're not, again, waiting for all back in the building. Instead, we're reaching out and really trying to engage with those students who are having the most difficulty in engaging. The middle school has been also scheduling parent meetings with the teams and teachers and counselors to help focus on those most academically challenged. After, right after Thanksgiving, we began bringing into the building. So we were remote, but we brought in approximately 30 of our high-needs special education students. So even though the rest of the population of students was remote, we brought in these students who we really felt needed to be in the building and to benefit from direct staff intervention. So we do have students that are coming into the building. When we come back in our hybrid model, many of these students will be attending four days a week instead of the two days a week that the hybrid sets up. The middle and high school are looking to do the same for those students who are struggling mostly. So we're looking at those students who don't fall under the special ed guidance, but instead are just really struggling, whether it be with grades or attendance. And we're reaching out to them as well. So should we be remote? We'll have another two groups of students, middle school and the high school, who we'll be inviting to be in the building, obviously in smaller groups, so that we can help address their needs. And when we are back hybrid, then some of those students will have the option of going four days a week as well. The other piece that we've been working closely with H.M., Youth and Family Services on, is the whole idea around student mental health and emotional health. You may remember that every two years, H.M. does a drug and alcohol survey. And they, we completed one this fall. It's our two years, and so the timing is for this. And we haven't seen the results yet. Hopefully, you'll see the results, if not in January, then probably February. The good news is that some of the The good news is that some of the metrics have, have shown positive growth and. Um, so we're very happy with some of the results of the survey. However. The survey did ask some questions that were pointedly addressed at the impact of the pandemic and. We certainly are seeing students that are expressing loneliness and anxiety and stress. So. Um, we have an, an active group with H M staff, working with the middle and high school counseling staffs. Who are developing a series of, um, videos and opportunities to reach out to students. Um, you know, it's a challenge because the last thing that a lot of our students want to do is join in another virtual meeting. That's not necessarily what it is. It's going to help, uh, help alleviate some of their anxiety. So we're. Looking for other ways of reaching out to them. Um, and so we're, the H M is developing a series of videos there. So we're, we're hoping that we'll be able to make some, some inroads there. So. We've got programs in place. You'll see in my budget presentation, some thoughts that we have to, um, also help engage students. Into, as we move into next year. Um, but we are certainly, um, it is, it is high on our minds and we're actively working to. Help engage those students that are, are most challenged. Again, you know, I think on the, on the, the good news end of the story. We have a lot of our students, most of our students are engaged and doing just fine, but you know, that's, it's simply not enough to say that most of us are doing fine. Um, we really need to make sure that we're addressing the needs of everybody. So, um. We have a lot of initiatives that are moving in that direction. Just if I could also add that, um, there has been, and, and we've all seen it in the news, but there has certainly been a significant shift. Away from our weekly Department of Health meetings focused on contact tracing. And we're now moving to the vaccine phase of our discussions. So. Each school has identified an individual who will be connecting with the state to. Communicate all of the staff members within the school that will be, will have access to the vaccination. Um, we are in group one B as educators. So once the, um. The, the frontline health workers are vaccinated, we would be amongst the group that gets vaccinated next. Still unclear to us and hopefully we'll know more tomorrow. We have a Department of Health meeting tomorrow morning and a local Chatham Department of Health meeting in the afternoon. Um, whether we'll be identifying one of the schools within our health district. And teachers will be vaccinated in those areas or whether we'll be, um, teachers will receive a, um. Like a ticket and they'll be able to go to a C V S or wherever else the vaccines might be delivered. So. We're still looking at the details there, but certainly we're deeply engaged in, in the whole, um, logistics of. Um, beginning the process of, of vaccines. Um, it's not going to happen this month and, uh, hopefully it will begin to happen in January, but. Um, whenever it happens, we're, we're getting ready. So that's a certainly, um. A positive. Were able to do something. So I'm glad to report that.
Scott, can I ask a question? Um, because Chatham is, is, um. Shifting their focus to, um, vaccines. You're the, the, um, contact tracing now, I think you mentioned before, that is all on the school's shoulders, correct?
Correct.
Do you have enough people to, to do that? Are you, um? Do you foresee that your administration and nurses are going to be really burdened by that?
Um, I think the answer to both those questions. Um, we, I think we do have enough people. I think that the challenge we'll experience obviously is if we're back in school and we have. A, another surge following, you know, the holidays and where, you know, when we were out, we were seeing one to two. Positive cases a day. Um, if we still see multiple positive cases a day. That would, that, that would make it a, a very challenging, um, situation. It's going to be like that for all of us. So, you know, I think all schools are going to be challenged with that because, you know, during the, um, break or when we're not in session. The local health departments pick up a lot of the burden of doing those contact traces. If the students don't happen to be in school. Um, even, even now, if we're not in school, we basically adopt. Entire responsibility for completing the content tracing for the RAM community, certainly not. School, but so I think the answer to that, Stephanie, is, is it depends on. How, um, how much contact tracing we, we, we have to do. If, if things stay where they are right now, I'd say we, we're in pretty good shape. If we see a significant surge, then it's going to be a, a significant challenge.
Does anyone else have any questions for Scott?
I, I have a question. I have a statement that's Sue stopping. And, uh, question, Scott, I appreciate the feedback on. You know, what you're doing with the students that are having a difficult time, um, you know, being full-time distance learning. Have we, so it's great and I'm happy to hear, of course, that we're aligning and working with A H M as well. Um, I am anxiously awaiting the results, just like I'm sure everyone is, um, also awaiting those results and hopefully in January, we will. Um, have those in our hands. Um, my question with the students that are having a difficult time, um. It seems like you're covering all bases, but did you ever consider, and I don't know if they're willing. Uh, grabbing a few of those students and maybe forming a committee to see. What their thoughts are and if they have any recommendations on what more the school could be doing and. Just trying to gain some insight from them. Um, it's just, you don't have to respond. It's just a suggestion. Um, cause I know we have lots of committees and lots of folks, um, making recommendations. So sometimes when you get. The, the children involved, maybe they can come, come up with some good ideas, but I'm happy to hear that we're covering all of our. Um, basis, especially with those students that, which I feel horrible about. I hear, you know, I don't hear that a lot of terrible stories, but. You know, the kids that are not doing well, it's upsetting, um, obviously upsetting to all of us. So.
Yep. Thank you, Sue. But actually, I, I really do need to give a shout out to H M, you know, because, because they, they do this survey and. Once the survey is completed, um, they, they have an expert who. Does the analysis and then creates what we all see. And again, we're still a month or two away from seeing that final result, result, but. Because the, the, the raw data showed that there were students. Reporting, you know, a sense of loneliness, a sense of, um, you know, disconnection. They really felt strongly that they wanted to reach out to us so that we could start addressing those issues now as opposed to waiting. Um, you know, two months when we actually had the results. So I really have to give a shout out to H M for. Um, being such a, a good partner and reaching out to us and, and letting us work together to. Address, you know, speak and to dress those students.
Yes. Good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, Stephanie.
Um, Scott, this is Kathleen, just a question. Um, try to keep up with the governor's messages. Is he still recommending, um, that high schools stay in virtual mode at this time?
We are not, no, the, the governor is not making any recommendations whatsoever regarding. Where, what, what mode we're supposed to be in. So, um, neither the Department of Ed or the governor, you know, they're really making that a local decision. Um, you know, having said that, if you look across the state, most secondary schools are in virtual mode at this point. Um, partly because we're so big, partly because. Our students tend to be more, um, social and, and have the ability to be out and about. So, you know, it's, it's a different scenario than it might be in, in a, um. In a elementary school. So, no, we're not getting any specific guidance. Um, the Department of Health will occasionally indicate that should, should the next, um, spike be significant enough? We may get some guidance, but that's not the case right now. Um, the only, I'll, I'll add if I can, one more thing is that. As you know, that the CDC has modified both the quarantining. Guidance and the guidance for the travel, um, quarantining. So. The travel guidance was that you had to quarantine for 14 days upon coming back to Connecticut. They have since reduced that to 10 days. And that is actually from the governor. And so we do need to adopt that as a school. So. Whereas we were in the previously requiring our staff and students and community members quarantine for 14 days. We're now only need to acquire them for 10 days. On the issue of. Close exposure. This is, 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 is quite confusing because the CDC still recommends 14 days, yet they produced. Um, new guidance that says either 10 days without a test or seven days with a negative test. But each of the Department of Health is telling us, don't adopt those new guidelines, stick with the 14 days. I think we'll hear more about that tomorrow and, um, tomorrow, both morning and the afternoon with the local and state Department of Health. But, um. We are getting some contradictory guidance as far as the quarantine guidelines, but in terms of being in school. The state has been pretty, um, consistent with asking us if at all possible to remain in school.
All right. So this is Jean. Do you think that this new, uh, strain is going to also impact that?
Oh, boy. I tell you, that terrified me when I heard it this morning, only because I'm thinking, what does this do to, um? You know, schools, you know, even though we, we have seen some transmission, it's been minimal, certainly compared to. What's happening in the general, um, communities. Um, if we have a more virulent, um, strain, um, Gina, I don't know what that'll do for us. Um. I, 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 I hope and, and I think, you know, I, I can speak for both middle and high school, and I think I can speak for elementary schools. Our students and teachers have been doing an amazing job of mitigating this. You, you know, I. I, I won't invite you to come into the building because I don't want any of you walking into the building because we don't want it, people that aren't supposed to be there, there, but. If you walked in, you would see everybody's got a mask on. It's not an issue. Um, people are doing what they need to do. And so, you know, it doesn't frighten me when we're in the building. Quite frankly, it's more, um, our behavior out. And about that, that concerns me more with that. And, you know, quite frankly, with, with. Um, and please, our student reps on the board, I, I'm not directing this at you, but you know, for high school students. You know, they're not always as careful as, as we hope they might be at all times. And so, you know, more virulent strain could, um, certainly. Impact us much more significantly. So, um. Hopeful that both our mitigation efforts and the vaccine will. Put us in a good position there. But yeah, Jean, we certainly are watching and listening very carefully for any evidence of that.
Stephanie, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. And I think I raised my hand. I don't know if you can see it or if that's working. Um. Scott, I heard you say, and I was happy that you said that we're reaching out in a friendly, helpful, compassionate way to work with families. Um, but I also took some notes and I heard you say that anxiety and depression are higher. And I know a lot of times when A H M has reported to us, that's confidential. So. Do you have any, um, new ways or have we invited? Parents and or students who maybe are concerned about. Possible anxiety, depression, you know, a different kind of, um, motivation to check in with a guidance counselor or someone or. Are there plans like that?
Absolutely, Judy. Yes, we are. And, and we're not only inviting them to. Connect with us, but our counselors are reaching out. So if they're concerned that a student is, um, exhibiting. Signs of anxiety or depression, we're also reaching out to those students.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to ask is how about those students? Who maybe you don't know about yet, like A H M is, um, confidential, right? Is that accurate?
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, you know. I like all of you, I'm doing a lot of work on S C L and that is one of the hot topics right now. Is those students who are doing okay, who, who weren't, who we're not catching. Is that just something? That you're ongoing discussing or?
Absolutely. And Judy, you're, you're, you're right that H M certainly the information they receive is confidential. One of the. You know, the strength of our connection and community with H M is the fact that we do have the A H M. Um, counselors in each of the buildings. Some of that, you know, if they're learning of. Of students and families that are struggling within H M, they're able to, um, reach out and do some things without having to necessarily. Share that information with anyone. So that's.
I appreciate that. I guess what I'm saying, um, is if there's worry now as this has gone on. That there are kids who were, were not catching, but I mean, I know. That you're a strong leader. We've got a great guidance department and I would imagine you'll just keep updating us as. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Scott?
I just had a quick question. This is Ben. If everybody can mute, if you're not speaking, that would be helpful. Um, there is some feedback. Um, but Scott, I had a question on the, um, I know teachers used to have, um. Classroom hours, you know, where the kids could come and get help, um. Either before school or, or during the free period or, or when the teacher was free or after school. Um, and obviously we had tutor programs where the, the, the kids would get tutoring help. Uh, and I know for the seniors, that's tough because there's no really any, anyone above the seniors. Um, so is there any, is there any kind of classroom office hours for the teachers that they're holding for help or?
Well, teachers still have that, um, hour at the end of the day, Ben, where they're, they're available to students. Um, and then during, during the day, they also have either their duty or prep period. So there is time built in their days. Um, so, yeah, so teachers do have time where they can connect with kids other than. Um, you know, in the classroom or at the time that they're in the classroom, also at a time when students don't have other classes at the end of the day.
Gotcha. Thank you. And the second question I had was regarding the elementary schools. It seemed like when the elementary schools got shut down, we would be adversely affected with, with staffing. Which would mean we'd have to shut down. Is that, is that kind of accurate, what you're finding? I, I would think Hebron, obviously with the large number. Of elementary school, uh, kids, uh, and, and teachers. Um, and then probably Marlboro secondly, but is that, is that kind of where we're going? If the, if the elementary schools are getting shut down, then we're automatically. Having to shut down?
It, it definitely has an impact on us, Ben. So, you know, Andover and Marlboro have been very fortunate and. Um, you know, I think they're able to take advantage of the fact that they're, they're just a little smaller and they are able to. Do all that wonderful distancing and, and the mitigation efforts and, and quite frankly, they've had very, very few cases. Um, Hebron has, hasn't been as fortunate and just has more cases. I, it's not Hebron's fault. It's just, you know, the, the, the roll of the dice, I think. And. When Hebron closes, it does impact us because we have so many teachers with. Student elementary, you know, lower elementary grade students that, um, are impacted. So, yeah, it, it certainly does. Um, and we also hear from families that. If the elementary closes, they are hopeful that we'll be closed as well because they rely on their older siblings to. Provide childcare, particularly if the parent has to work. So it, it definitely complicates the, the mix. Pretty significantly. And, and mostly with Hebron, because I think we have a lot of teachers that, that are, um, you know, have connections to Hebron.
And there's no real, there's no real solution for that, um. You know, the watching the kids thing at, at that age, because there's, there's very few, uh, daycares that are open and, and I don't know if even at the, at the high school, if, if that. Uh, you know, school program is open or not, but, um, I, I don't think, I don't know if there's a viable solution for that, uh, that problem.
Right. You know, and, and I'll give another shout out to H M, you know, they, we have the preschool program at RAM. And historically it's been either a Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday program. And it wasn't geared towards teachers that needed someone to watch their kids and they modified the program. And so. You know, that has provided a, a real significant solution for a number of our, our teachers that. Kind of solves that problem for them. But you're right, in, in today's day and age, um. With so many childcare centers closing and the typical daycare that. Teachers are accustomed to maybe either on hiatus or having gone out of business. It, it's not a simple matter of simply saying. You know, find someone to watch your kid because, um, what was a difficult task before the pandemic and for some is, is next to impossible. Yeah, it's, it's, if nothing else, I think working, you know. Yeah, it's, if nothing else, I think working, you know, seeing the view where we see it, it's remarkable how many of the day-to-day things that we take for granted have been impacted by the pandemic.
Thank you. All set.
Stephanie, you're muted.
Are there any other questions for Scott? Okay. All right, we'll move on to number nine, consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for November 16th and personnel actions for rescheduled leave for Todd Helig, a resignation of Diane Zaber, and a leave request from Ashley Ward. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Rob will second.
All right, we're going to open it up for discussion.
Would you like to give me any background on the personnel requests? I think they're pretty straightforward.
They're pretty straightforward. Anybody need any information? Okay.
If I could just, just add for Diane Zaber, has been our early childhood teacher for years at Ram. And when she went part-time, she had actually retired and, you know, was able to come back and work part-time. And we were so grateful that she was willing and interested in doing that. And, you know, she's decided to, to kind of finish her career out at the end of January. So I want to express our gratitude for Diane in terms of creating a very, very strong program. And, you know, I'd also like to give a shout out on this to Sam Shattle. Rob, I'm not, I'm not, this isn't for you, so please don't get your head any bigger than it already is. But Sam Shattle has done a really wonderful job of helping us find a replacement for Diane. To find an individual that's certified to teach early childhood is like trying to find, you know, Martian in Hebron. They don't exist. And she was really creative and was able to find someone who I know is going to do a great job. So I want to thank Diane Zaber, and I want to thank Sam Shattle as well.
Thank you, Scott. All right, are we ready to move to a vote? All right, Kathleen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Yes, but I should have asked a question during, with regards to, are they really straightforward? Are we, what are we doing with, we're approving all of these requests?
Is that a question?
Do we need to?
That's all right. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll vote for yes.
And Joe, I recommend a yes on any one of those, just.
Well, I was hoping that someone else would ask the question, but, you know, we're moving this for Mr. Helwig. We had a lot of discussion prior to this, and I'd like to reopen it for discussion. But I know I'm past my, where I should be. So if we can just get maybe, you know, I'm happy to give him approval if that's what we're recommending.
I think, Stephanie, I think, I think that we could go back if, you know, I mean, I think we should only approve a consent agenda when everybody is clear. It's up to you, you know, the point as chair right now. But we could go back just to, you know, Superintendent Leslie said that he would support them and just hear from him if you wanted to.
Sure, I'd be happy to go back. Todd was the person who we okayed to a non-paid leave to go back to school. And he wants to defer that till next year, correct?
Correct. And the reason for his request is entirely related to COVID-19. His, he and his wife are experiencing childcare issues because of the fact that their young children are remote much of the time. And so it's created a real hardship. And it's not a time that he'd be able to kind of walk away and fully engage himself in the nursing program. So Yukon has approved the postponement. And I would certainly recommend approving it mostly because this is, again, strictly related to COVID-19 and it's totally out of his control. And is not, this is not his desire. It's not something he's asking because he'd like to do it. It's something that he's, he's asking because he really needs to based upon the impact of COVID on his childcare challenges.
For future, I believe we had Stephanie as a point of order. I think we need, it would be helpful for Scott to just give us his recommendation. I think the previous superintendent did that, you know, to let us know unless we had this. Because, again, I feel uncomfortable voting for something, you know, that I really don't have knowledge of, personally speaking, you know, for this individual or for any of these individuals. Obviously, a resignation, you know, we're sorry, they're moving on, they're retiring. We get that. But if there's something there that's, you know, like this, this situation, I think we would just, it would be nice to just, Scott's statement, I approve these or whatever. Didn't we have that before?
We, Joe, we would, we would usually request that. So I think, I think that's why, and I think it's still, I believe technically still is in order that Superintendent Leslie did that at Chairman Bancroft's request. Because we, it wasn't necessarily stated we would, whoever was sitting or acting as chair would elicit that opinion to help guide discussion. So I think this was helpful. I think you did what we always do, kind of.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Judy. I'll move along.
Okay, would anybody like to ask any questions about Ashley Ward's request for leave?
Stephanie, should we, or Chairman Bancroft, should we just have Superintendent Leslie? Just since that, just do a, do a brief?
Sure.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
So with Ashley Ward, she was approved for a childbearing leave, October 5th through January 4th. The teacher's contract allows her to extend that. And so she is requesting, under the guidelines of the contract, to extend it until January 29th. So, well, it's in, it's allowed by the contract. And so there's, there's no reason not to approve that.
Okay. Okay. If everybody's okay or done with questions, we'll go back to make a motion. I think, no, I think we can go on to vote because we've already had a motion in a second. So, all right, so we're going to vote on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So a motion passes unanimously.
Stephanie? You missed me. You missed me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judy?
I am a yes, but I don't know.
Okay, my apologies. I just didn't have you on my list. I will not miss you again. Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, number 10, old business. 10.1, Discussion and Resolution of 2021 Snow Day Practice.
So the last we discussed this, it was quite a lively discussion. And I think that the request was for me to bring it back to the leadership team and see if we couldn't come up with a middle ground of holding some snow days. And maybe like the first couple would be snow days and then moving to remote days if we had more than a few snow days. Brought it back to our coordinators and our school leadership team. And the, the feeling amongst the staff is pretty unanimous that they really would like to, like us to have the option of remote learning. And partly because our teachers are really feeling the sting of a, really a choppy year and losing time. And so there is still that, that request that we be allowed to do that on snow days so that we can lose less time and less momentum as teachers are moving through the material. Having said all that, what I would, would love for the board to approve would be to essentially give us the option of choosing either a snow day or a remote learning day. And I'll use the storm we had this past week. We, obviously, we chose a snow day because you hadn't approved the option to do anything else. Even had you approved the option to do remote learning, we would not have done remote learning on a day where they're predicting 18 inches of snow. Regardless of the fact that we didn't get that much, still, I'm sure that many of our teachers and many of our students spent a good portion of the day shoveling out and, you know, doing that type of work. So, you know, I would like at least the option to be able to use remote learning. And where I think that that could be of particular benefit would be is if we had a snow event coming up and we knew it wasn't going to be a major storm. But my AP teachers were looking at, you know, a practice exam coming up the next week and really feeling the pinch to get the students prepared for that. Having a remote learning day could really help make the difference in terms of allowing that to happen. Our performing arts students, if they had a deadline because of a performance that they're working towards, having that remote learning day could really make the difference. Obviously, if we're looking at a serious and a significant storm, we would be calling a snow day. And, you know, now that we already have one snow day under our belt, I would request that we be given the option of calling a remote learning day or a snow day, depending on both the nature of the storm and the necessity of continuity of education, depending on what might be going on at the time. There were some districts that did go remote during this past storm. And I know that some of those districts at least received a great deal of criticism and ajuda because, you know, it was a lot of snow and a lot of snow to expect students to be focused there and learning. So, so my request would be that, rather than saying, you know, the first few storms would be snow days and then we would be removed to remote, my request would be that we be given the option to choose a remote learning day when appropriate and to choose a snow day when appropriate. For both the benefit of our kids, if they need the time to clear their driveway, and the benefit of our classes, if they need the time to, you know, have the kids in class and.
Scott, is that something you need a motion on?
I do, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, we, this, give the superintendent the authority to determine whether a inclement weather day is classified as a snow day or a remote learning day.
I'll second, Vin.
Is there any discussion?
Stephanie, I have.
Go ahead, Sue.
Um, sorry, Vinny, I think I interrupted you. My, my comment would be, I'm fine with this. However, it would be great, you know, I think I mentioned, Scott, to you one-on-one about, you know, a forum and just explaining to the community how we're making decisions and getting to where we need to be. It would be great if this, if this is a decision the board passes, somehow we could communicate that to the community because there were lots of questions, I know I received, which I normally direct them right to where they need to go. But there was lots of questions on why, why are we having a snow day when they can distance learn? And I think your point is valid of, you know, some days will be, some days won't be. But the community really needs to understand that logic. And sometimes these type of discussions are better done verbally than in writing, you know, through an email. So, you know, the elementary school, Marlboro Elementary School, did a great public meeting, just explaining a status update, explaining a lot of things. And it went over well. We had 86 folks dial in. And that's, we all know how amazing that is to get that participation at any meeting. So anyways, I'm hoping that whatever the board does vote on, that we could clearly communicate to the community why we're making this decision.
Absolutely. And I know that you guys are often the front line for hearing from folks so that, you know, as we, if there's a storm approaching, you know, I will certainly be communicating with you guys as well to make sure that you had the information too, so that if people ask you, you'd be able to know. But we certainly will make that clear to our communities in terms of what the decision is and why we might be making those.
Vin?
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of echo, you know, what Sue was saying regarding, you know, people were saying, well, you know, it's because there's a power outage. If there's a 2% power outage, then they can't hold classes. And, you know, if the internet goes down and if the teachers can't get into their classroom to get stuff that they need, you know, so there was a lot of that, you know, kind of going around. But I do agree with, you know, a storm that of that magnitude, given the administration the flexibility. You know, if it's, if it's a, you know, three to five inch storm, like we usually have, that hits us, you know, right in the middle of the morning commute, when we're normally closed, that, you know, that's, that's something where you say, okay, we're going to go remote and it's not that big of a deal. So I agree with that. And I don't want to see anyone get ajuda, especially Scott. Thank you.
Much appreciated, Vin.
Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments?
Yeah, sure. I kind of have a little more of a comment than a question. I would just be curious if, moving forward, you would put something in the whole snow day outlook about teachers not assigning new assignments during the snow day? Because I fielded multiple calls about that. Why their child was getting assigned a new assignment when the school was supposed to be closed.
Oh, oh, okay. So teachers reaching out and kind of maybe taking advantage of the fact that you'll be home, so you can do something. Yep.
Correct. Like one person I know honestly didn't check his email till 9:30 because he assumed it was a snow day and he had a new assignment that was due the next day. So.
Yep.
Stephanie, Joe, Scott has, how is the teachers, what's their take on this, on your, on, are they supportive of this? Okay. And the only other comment I have is, you know, I think people have to understand, this is, you know, it's uncharted. You know what I mean? We have no, you have no guidelines for this, this type of things right now. And I remember one of the student representatives talking about this because I know this happened to my sons three or four years ago, whatever, when they had, I think one of the student reps talked about adding days. It was, I think we went like six, we went into mid-June, right, for one of our graduations? So, you know, I don't think we want to be doing that. And I, I know we're, they're forecasting a pretty severe winter here. So I think you're probably going to need all the flexibility you can possibly have. So I'm in support of it.
Yes, I think, Joe, I think Lily, you did such a nice job of kind of expressing, we want to get through this year as quickly as possible and to add additional days because of snow, maybe more than some of our students could bear. So, yeah, definitely, definitely a factor.
Hi, this is Jean. This is really just a comment, and I totally understand and agree with where we're going. agree with where we're going with this. But I, I just, Judy and some of the other folks who work more on a state level or have in the past, I was sharing with Stephanie that I, when I, I was a senior during the blizzard of '78 up in Massachusetts, and they apparently exempt seniors. So, they don't have to worry about graduation as a moving target. We didn't have to make up the three weeks of school. Everybody else did. And so, it was, so, just if you're working on the state level, maybe that's a different approach. If it works for Massachusetts, it, you know.
Um, Stephanie, it's Kathleen.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Um, just a, a quick thing, and I want to thank Scott and everybody who's putting in a lot of time on this. This is not an easy call, no matter what. The only thing, whatever we come up with, is a way for students, if there is, if it is a remote day, and for whatever reason, they cannot access learning that day, a way, some form, I know there's many forms that we fill out, but a way that they could be excused appropriately, of course, with the caveat of making up work as necessary, but something that's clear to parents about how to report to the school if it's not possible for them to do work.
Yep. I should also just add that this really is just for this year. The state has given us no indication that they would extend the ability to do this into next year. So, this chances are, it's just a one-year thing.
Stephanie, Joe, Scott confirmed for us that it's still 181 days? Is that, what is it that we have?
177.
Okay.
Yeah, the state, this, what the state did is they gave us the op, the option of reducing the 180 days. So, norm, typically, it's 180 days. They gave us the option of reducing that to 177, but only at the beginning of the school year, so that schools could use that, those extra days for professional development, have teachers training without students there, to prepare for what they knew was going to be a very unusual year. So, we actually took two of those days. So, our, our year was reduced from 180 to 178. We didn't need the full three days, so. But, but I can't use that extra day later on. You know, I can't say that, well, we've had one snow day, so I'm gonna take that as my third day off of the 180 and get us to 177. That was only an option that we could use at the beginning of the school year.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Is there anyone else with questions or comments? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so it passes unanimously. Okay, number 10.2, Second Reading of Policy, 6195, Credit for Online Courses, enclosure 10.2.
And, and this one, this one should be a quick one. Let me, I'll share, I'll share it on my screen, just so everyone... Okay. So... There were two policies that we discussed earlier. One, the credit for online course, and then the other, the graduation requirements. We're bringing the graduation requirements back to our first reading in a little bit, since we did make some substantive changes to it. On this one, we had presented last, last time, that what we're proposing is the existing language, which says, "Any expense incurred for taking online courses shall be the responsibility of the student," and not the Board of Education. And that is, that is really not what the state is asking us to do, nor, nor is it really what our practice for the last few years has been. And instead, we're proposing the reading, "The Board of Education may, in its discretion, cover the costs for online courses that are not offered as in-class or online courses at Ram. The Board of Education may also cover the cost of virtual high school courses offered through the district's subscription with Virtual High School." We have been offering virtual high school courses to students for well on to 15 years now. And the new graduation requirements really encourage schools to, are really kind of require that schools adopt the attitude that we encourage students to take online courses. So, this really just brings us in line with our current practices and state guidelines. And again, we discussed this at the last meeting and when we did the first reading. So, this would be a second reading and a vote to approve the policy.
Okay. So, we, this is second read, so we're looking to make a motion to pass the changes to 6195?
I'll make a motion to adopt the changes as laid out for 6195 Credit for Online Courses.
This is just for a second. Is there any discussion?
Stephanie, it's Kathleen. I know we missed a meeting this past Thursday because of the snow. Was that the Program Committee meeting to discuss this?
No, it was not. The Policy and Program Committee has already discussed this policy. So, no, this, this, the, the program committee that we moved to January 7th is looking at different topics.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joe? Joe, you there? Okay, I'm gonna move on to Lori.
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Did we lose Joe from the meeting?
I'm a yes.
Okay, you're a yes, thank you. And I'm a yes, so it passes unanimously. Okay, and then 10.3 Budget Appropriation Transfer, Enclosed, enclosure 10.3.
So, as part of our year-end closure, we have, and during COVID, we have been allowed to do a Family First Corona Relief Medical Leave Act. At the time that the person was at home quarantining, that person chose not to enact the Family First Corona Relief Act medical leave provision. Unfortunately, that person was no longer with any time on the books, paid time off, and was not paid. After the year ended, he chose to go to the union, and through a union negotiation mediation, the time was given back to the person. And so, this was a transfer that needed to be made in the last fiscal year in order to close out the last fiscal year property, properly.
Are there any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Okay, is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the transfer of $805.92 to the operating account. How does Eva need it to say?
It's to take the $805 from unallocated personnel to the custodial salary line.
Like she said, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Rob, a second.
Is there a discussion?
I have a question. Could you please explain that again? Did it go to, was it a union complaint? Did it, just so we are clear on how far...
So, when, when the, yeah, so when, when the person came in or told us that they needed to quarantine due to an exposure, that person was informed of the new act that Congress has enacted under the new expanded federal medical leave act. At that time, the person chose not to partake, because it's a one-time 80-hour, I believe, till December 31st, 2020. But I'm not sure if that just got extended or not last night. But in any case, once, of course, June ended, the person then decided, did not go back to the supervisor or HR to, to inquire any further about this, just decided to go make a union grievance.
Okay, so it was through a union grievance. That's, that's fine. I just wanted the information. Yes, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Eva, what, what is the particular grievance?
Um, I guess that he felt that we did not offer him this ability for him to have his sick time come out of the Federal Family Leave Act. It was discussed with him. Unfortunately, nothing was put in writing, so we felt that the person had the ability, and we didn't want to not pay him either, but...
Thank you.
Yep.
And was this negotiated amount, the full amount that he was owed, or is this a...
No, that's the amount he was owed.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No? Okay, we're gonna bring it to vote?
I, I actually do have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, I'm sorry to, but...
It's all right. Speak now.
So, it's just, it's a little bit puzzling to me. So, Ava, clarify, because I know we don't have an HR department, but who is responsible for, given that person, the information?
Our HR department is Jan Shortz. She is the HR generalist. She handles all family medical related leaves and/or any other HR type of work. The person who spoke to this person in particular was Mr. Schleyhofer, the Director of Facilities. It was, not sure if it was a language barrier, but at that time, the person has chosen not to fall under or not to put his leave under the, that Family Medical Leave Act expansion.
And is this normally, again, uncharted, you know, with COVID and all this stuff, is this something we normally would put in writing to people, or we did put in writing?
Yes, yes. So, in normal, in a normal situation, if you have an absence that's five days or longer, yes, that is all put in writing. And your sick time is used concurrently with Family Medical Leave Act. In this particular instance, due to the timing of the year, this person was without any more time, but chose not to, I think because of the caveat that you can only have the 80 hours at one point in time, I think the fear was that if he should come up with this illness, you know, right now, he was just quarantining because of an exposure. But if he should come up with the illness, he felt that maybe he needed that time in the bank. And I guess maybe he thought, second guessed it or rethought it when he got home, whatever the situation was, and chose to go to the union instead.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Is there any, any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joe?
Uh, yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Eva. All right, going on to number 11, New Business, 11.1 Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Board Meeting Dates for 21-22 School Year, enclosure 11.1. Okay. Scott, this is, this is the discussion regarding the budget meetings?
This, no, this is just the regular meeting.
Oh, this is the regular one, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion, this is Joe, I make a motion that we approve the regular board meetings dates for 21-22 school year.
I second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? No? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. It passes.
Uh, Stephanie, I just want to remind you, it's 8 o'clock, or 3 minutes, too, so...
Yep. Um, yes, we're, we're running about 15 minutes past our time, so we're moving along. Thank you, Joe. 11.2 First Reading Policy, 6146 Graduation Requirements, enclosure 11.2.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again on this one. And again, this one, this one, you've seen this before. This, this would have been on the second reading along with the online courses. But if you remember, for the graduation requirements, we have our current 24 credits, and this is in place for those students up through the graduating class of 2022, and then beginning with the graduating class of 2023. Rather than list, specifically list the areas that the credits need to be included in, it's a much more general overview of where the credits can come from. And you may remember that, rather than focusing specifically on English, Science, Social Studies, Math, it focused on either Humanities or Science, Technology, and Engineering. What I think was a sticking point for a number of us was that if we simply passed the policy as, as we had been reviewing, it could have conceivably been possible that a student maybe get through high school without taking four English classes, or maybe even three English classes. And so, there was a, and kind of the effort to want to continue to, wide flexibility, but at the same time, maintain our current degree of rigor and still require that students engage in a certain number of English, Math, and Science classes. So, what you see here, the highlighted areas are the additions to this policy. So, nothing else changes. They're still required to take nine credits in Humanities and nine credits in Math, Science, Technology, and Engineering. But what we're asking them, or requiring them to do is, as they divide up those credits, they still would be required, a student would still be required to have four, four credits of English, three credits of Social Studies, three credits of Math, three credits of Science, and one credit of Fine Arts or Career and Technical Education for graduation. It still allows them to take advantage of the breadth of courses that the new graduation requirement pushes students towards taking, but it also... requirement pushes students towards taking, but it also ensures that students have a strong foundation in English, social studies, math, science and either the finer career and technical arts. So it's, it's, it's in many ways a very minor tweak, but in many ways, a very significant one. And I can tell you that certainly among the program and policy committees, there was a lot of support for this and as there is amongst the staff as well. And you don't need to, we were, since we, since it is a fairly significant change, you don't need to vote on it this evening, we'll bring it back to January, so you'll have another chance to take a look at it. So we, we brought it back to a first reading since it.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Scott before we move on?
Do we have to move it to a second reading, or does it automatically go?
It automatically goes to second reading. I mean, I guess actually, Vinnie, I'm not, I'm not sure of that answer. Judy might know.
Yeah, it automatically goes, yes.
It does, unless, unless we decide not to. If we, right, Sue, unless we make the decision to hold it for some reason, that it should go back to committee.
Yes, that's true, but.
So we do, do we need to make a motion?
No, there's no motion. It's first read. If anybody has comments, they should get the comments to the policy committee and, you know, they could re-discuss it again. If not, it'll just go right to second read and then a vote.
And then a vote, okay. All right. Okay, um, does anybody have any comments or questions at this time? If not, we'll move on to eleven point three. Overview of items likely to impact the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget.
Yes, so I'm gonna present my screen again. Whoever thought trying to put together a budget during a pandemic was a good idea? Not sure what they were thinking. So, um, so what I'm gonna be presenting to you this evening is no numbers, I'm not giving you any, any figures at this point, we'll be sharing all of the financial details in January, because quite frankly, we're still, you know, we're still looking at, at the, kind of all the details, but this will give you hopefully an overview of the types of things that we've been considering, we've been looking at, the types of things that are, are driving the budget this year. And the most obvious reason for doing this is the board policy that requires that in January, the superintendent present the budget, but that at the meeting beforehand, the superintendent present some of the items that will be impacting the development of the budget. We are certainly considering our mission, our vision, our theory of action. All of this, even though we're in the midst of a pandemic and we're trying to plan for something that we may not have an absolutely clear view of, we still want to make sure that we're, we stay true to our, our mission, vision and theory of action. Our commitments continue to exist, developing a fiscally efficient and accountable budget to maximize resources, providing a welcoming, accepting, well-maintained, acceptable and safe facilities, offering a globally competitive world-class education, hiring, training, retraining, high-quality professional staff and engaging the community through active outreach. And we're still committed to the district strategic plan and the goals, providing all of our students with access to and actively engage in a variety of learning opportunities, develop our professional staff to promote a positive school climate, develop budgets that address the declining enrollment of the district and that are fiscally responsible, develop and implement strategies to enhance, further develop a culture of safety, acceptance, pride and support and enhance our facilities in order to support innovative and fully accessible teaching, learning and extracurricular activities. So those are all of the pieces that were in place before we sat down to begin thinking of the budget. This is the budget calendar and I think on, I think it's January seventh, the finance committee will, will certainly be taking a look at this again and this I can bring you up to speed of, of what got us to tonight. And we have, we have shared, you know, we, back in October, we shared the budget development manual with all of our directors and coordinators, so that each of the directors was involved in building their budgets with input from each of our coordinators. So the budget that you'll be presented with next month really is a collective effort that, that reflects our goals, but also reflects the needs of each of our individual departments as well. And all of that kind of led up to where we are tonight, December twenty-first, and present, presentation of new and major items. Moving forward, on January seventh, finance subcommittee will meet to look at the budget in, in more detail and then talk also about what comes next. And all I've done here is take the, the dates from the budget manual and these are the dates that we've used in the past where the budget gets presented on the board, the regular board meeting in January and then the first Mondays in, well, the Mondays in February are used as budget workshops. I'm not suggesting that these are the only three budget workshops, this is kind of what we've used in the past, certainly open to scheduling more and that's a conversation, you know, I think we'll have the finance subcommittee, but certainly anyone can chime in on that. So this is kind of the, the basics of what we'd be looking at, but as you can see, the public hearing i- in April and then the budget hearing in May, there's, there's quite a bit of time in there, so if we needed to schedule more budget workshops, we certainly can.
Can I ask a question before you move off of that screen?
Yep.
Or, or I could hold them to the end, whatever you prefer.
Yes, now, this is fine.
So February eighth, February twenty-second, it says Marlboro, Andover, what, what does that really mean?
You know, in the past, we've scheduled a meeting at Marlboro Elementary School and then one in Andover. You know, I know the intent was always to try to get out to the different communities. So I, you know, I didn't, I didn't change those from what we've done in the past, so that really is just designating location.
So, um, we're, those will obviously be remote through online virtual session.
That's a great question, Sue. You know, I'm, I'm bringing a, a budget workshop calendar that relies on kind of the normal days. You're correct, if we're remote, then those towns really lose their meaning, I think, at, at that point.
Okay, and we are, we are still sticking with the department coordinator is going to, you know, provide us information, are, are we, are we still doing the same format? Or is that up for discussion?
Yeah, that's up for discussion. I, I really am hoping to get feedback from you guys in terms of what you'd like to see and what's gonna be most helpful.
Okay, so the, the budget workshop, the public forum, I love that. So that is, just so I'm clear on what I'm reading here, that means that you'll present the budget and then allow the public to ask questions and then we can answer the questions in this meeting. So it's not, you know, they only make a public comment, we can't respond, this is a, a interactive public forum. Is that what I'm reading? Perfect. I love, I love that, love that idea, so that's great. I would recommend, and I know it's hard, but I'm almost thinking we may, if it's well-attended, maybe we would want to do another one of those. So that's just a suggestion, we don't have to throw it in there now. And for the eighth and twenty-second, let's just say we can meet in person. I, I don't know, I was never a big fan of the Marlboro, Andover and going to different locations and having the department heads spend their time providing all of us this information. That was never one of, I was never a big fan of that and not that I don't love hearing the teachers and administration speak, I feel like it's really wasting their time. We can read what they've presented to us and submit to us. We, as board members, I know we do a lot of reading around this time, so I think it's just redundant, that's just my opinion on those, so I would be okay with doing away with having the department coordinators go through their information. That's my opinion on that. Other than that, that's all I have for this screen.
And Sue, I, I heard that complaint as well and, you know, I think it may be a better use of our time to really focus that discussion time amongst the board and/or, you know, another public forum and, and possibly either submit questions for the coordinators or, you know, maybe we have a, an evening where the coordinator is available to answer questions as opposed to actually present anything.
Maybe, maybe that's something Scott, you and Stephanie and your coordinators should all discuss, because I think what's, I, I don't know, if I heard you right, Sue, what you're saying is you love all of the collaboration and the openness and having so many people involved, so it's great, we definitely want to hear, I'm speaking for myself, I definitely want to hear from the department coordinators, but maybe Scott, they could even share with you what they think would be most valuable for them to do for us to understand things. Like, I really feel like I've learned things when the math department has explained that, you know, X book does need to be replaced and Y book does not and because, and they, they give the reasons. So I, I think we're always trying to improve, right, continuous improvement, so if you could, if you could communicate, I, I would imagine your coordinators would have ideas too.
Jean?
Um, yeah, this is Jean. I, I kind of tend to agree that there was some, a lot of informational things for me that really struck a chord. I just remember the English department explaining how they have to try and get books and I, I was rather shocked that our state of education has come to this and that we aren't funding it to the degree that we're providing basic essentials, but, so I think there's some use in it, I'm wondering though, maybe they could just do a separate recording and somebody could put it together and share the link, given that we're all in lockdown anyway, they might be more comfortable doing it that way and then we could watch it on our own time, those of us, or, and put it on the website for people.
That's a great, great idea, Jean. I, I love that idea.
Great, okay.
And, and Scott, they've done it for a number of years, so I would be willing to bet almost anything that they have some great suggestions that, because I'm not the one presenting, I wouldn't even think of.
Right, right, no, I agree. Yep.
And we've, we've heard that, which is a great part of your leadership, that people feel very comfortable sharing that with you honestly, so that's why I think it's a great opportunity for you to hear from them, because they, I really believe they want the best education for kids and families and the community and I think they have a lot of information and ideas and, you know, we, we don't, there are a lot of things we don't know unless they tell us. So like, what do they really think is important for us to know? Because then many, many people talk to us to essentially get our take, is the budget reasonable, is it, you know, is it a good budget, is it inflated? And that way, I think it's, it's very important that we can really speak with confidence. I think we've made big gains in the last three to four years and trying to, you know, there were tough budget cycles, but boy, we knew that budget and we could defend it to anyone and everyone and, and we did, so I think that is the main thing, to give us the confidence, the ability, and what Jean just said, I think is brilliant, because then people could go on, I'm thinking, at any time and see that for themselves in here too. So, but right, our whole purpose, kind of going back to your goal, mission, all of that, is to fund this great education, so I think that may get us there.
Great. And so, you know, above and beyond our, our mission and goals, you know, what are the, what are the key elements that are, are driving this? Certainly, the critical need to provide the resources necessary to support student learning while addressing gaps in learning resulting from the pandemic. We know, and this isn't a RAM issue, this isn't a RAM middle school issue, it's not a RAM high school issue, this is an issue in every school in America, and I probably could expand that and say just about the world at this point, that we know that some of our students have, have lost momentum, some of our students have, are going to be experiencing gaps within their education and we need to make sure that we, that this budget supports our ability to address those gaps. And as you'll see, I think, you know, next month, it, it, this isn't about a lot of expensive new programs, this isn't about creating a lot of new things, I think a lot of it is about rethinking, at least for the next couple of years, how we do some of the things we typically do. You know, one of the, I think, great learning experiences for us as we move beyond the pandemic is the experience that Norland's had after Hurricane Katrina and, you know, you had students that were out of school for an extended period of time. And so they, they had the experience of, of bringing students back and, and experimenting and seeing what worked and what didn't. And, you know, I think what they found, it wasn't simply adding a lot of remedial courses and new programming, it was teachers differentiating, teachers making sure that they, they took the time to, to stop and to reteach and make sure that, that kids were with them as they moved forward, so, but that is certainly one of the pieces as we move forward with prepping this budget. The critical need to support student emotional health as we transition back to our traditional school setting, which I am anticipating, we will certainly be back full-time, all the time next year. I think it'll still look a little different, we might be wearing masks, at least through the fall, but I'm confident that we'll be able to all be back in the building together. The uncertainty of, and the need for continuing COVID mitigation efforts, we have to, at least as we plan the budget, I, I would love to think that these are items that we may be able to shed as we go through the planning process, but I think at least as we start the process, we have to assume that we'll still be using some and implementing some mitigation efforts when we return. And the need to continue to support progress that we've made in the maintenance and upkeep of our buildings, the school grounds and our athletic facilities. In terms of just some of the numbers, some of the, the pieces that we're looking at, our enrollment, one of the, the goals is to, is, is for our budgets to reflect the decrease in enrollment and we do anticipate that we'll be seeing forty-four fewer students in the middle school next year and fifty fewer students in the high school next year.
Scott, I'm sorry, forty-four and?
And fifty-eight.
Thank you.
And this, you know, this, we, you know, here's one of those other, we haven't experienced this before, one of the things that may mitigate this, and I stress the word may, because we haven't really seen this quite yet, but we know that the real estate market is, is insane at this point and we may very well see, we know we have an influx of families coming into the three towns, the house sales are, are, you know, off the charts. It would be nice to think that we may be able to mitigate some of these numbers through families coming into town, but nonetheless, these are the numbers that we have right now, so these are the numbers that we're looking at.
Scott, can you keep us, as we go through the budget season, updated on that? Because I'm hearing that there's been a lot of homes purchased.
Absolutely, yep. I will certainly keep you updated on that. Our, our health insurance costs are, right now, budgeted, we're budgeting at five-point-five percent. Being self-insured, we've experienced significant success in keeping any increases to a minimum and, you know, I, I suspect that if that number changes, it's likely to go down as opposed to up, but right now, all of us, all the players. But right now, um, all of us, all the players within the health consortium um are confident at this point in time with with five point five percent. Um, in terms of our bus contracts, we're in year three of a five-year contract. Um, the current contract we have with our bus company covers getting kids back and forth to school, covers athletics, covers field trips. We use Eastcon, which is, we use DATCO for the um, for bringing kids to school and athletics and field trips. And we use Eastcon for transporting um many of our special education students. As we work through the 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 bus contract, this really is not looking at next year. I'll talk about this year for just one minute. Um, being hybrid, being remote, obviously that impacts the bus usage. And um, we are currently in negotiation. When I say we, not just RAM, but all all of the three towns and RAM are currently in negotiations with the bus company to um see what what portion we would end up paying. Um, you know, the bus companies would certainly love us to pay a hundred, a hundred percent of the expenses. Um, and we certainly need to, you know, look out for the taxpayers. So we'll be uh coming in less than that. But that is an ongoing negotiations. Um, and again, that's not just with the three towns and RAM, but that's towns across the state. Um, as you have schools in hybrid models and and remote learning. Um, right now, in terms of contract increases, we know that the teacher's contract is going to be three point six-three percent. The administrators are two and a half percent, and we will be going into negotiation with the non-certified um union um probably January or February. And so we don't, we don't know what that percentage increase is going to be. And our, the facility subcommittee has been um working vigorously to develop a capable budget that continues the forward movement of maintaining our buildings um and ensuring improvements. Um, so we will have obviously a a total budget component of that. Um, with a an option of 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 a number, but it will also have some um additions if we're able to um squeak any more money into there. So one of the um one of the 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 lawsuit that has impacted, again, all of us, at least at the high school level, um, in terms of budgeting is AR versus Connecticut State Board of Education. And essentially, we're responsible for educating our special needs students up through the age of twenty-one, should they not earn their regular high school diploma. The lawsuit AR versus Connecticut State Board of Education resulted in the change of that date to their twenty-second birthday. So the year that the the student turns twenty-two. So that means that we're now responsible for um the education for um our special needs students if they haven't earned a regular diploma um through their, the year of their twenty-second birthday. This impacts um eight of our students who would normally have aged out of the program. But um due to this case, would be in our program next year. Um, this is currently on appeal. So right now, we don't know whether this is going to be something that will end up um remaining in the budget or if if on appeal, the the age is pushed back to twenty-one, then these eight students would not be included in the budget. Um, in addition, there were three unexpected students moving into the district who are currently um outplaced. So um, that obviously um adds to our on programming budget.
Can I just ask a quick question? What is it? Who is AR? What does that stand for?
I believe that's the initial of one of the individuals.
Yeah, and and it it is. And um, I think the the thing with it, and it's being appealed is right. And it makes it, I think, harder um to plan because Jean and everybody, it used to be until it's student, the the June thirtieth after the student turns twenty-one. And now it's the twenty-second birthday. And there's a big difference there because somebody could be November, someone could be March. And um so it's kind of messy. But but they do that. Like, there was another case, big case, um where they used initials PJ. So it's just initials.
Scott, oh, Scott, a quick question. For someone that um has exited that is twenty-one, will they be eligible to return back for services?
Um, we have contacted anyone who feel who who is included in the eligibility.
Okay.
And we have, we have reached out to anyone who's eligible within that group. Um, and there are eight total students that um their families would include them. I just, I'm not sure what the what the cutoff point is when when that eligibility is lost or when it's included. But we've reached out to everybody that would be included within this legislation or that when it's currently included in the lawsuit. So.
Thank you.
So um, some of the the proposed changes that um we'll be looking at either including or possibly removing from the budget. Um, I mentioned um earlier in dealing with the fact that we have students that um are not engaging, students that um may be experiencing more failures than they they have in a typical school year. Um, we really see the need to expand our summer school program. And you know, historically, RAM really hasn't had a summer school program. And the high school hasn't. The middle school has a summer school program, which has been very successful. The high school has not because there are so many options for students to engage in summer school programs. And we have so effectively used online courses for students to achieve credit recovery. Last year, when we came off of our remote learning from last spring, we expanded the number of online courses we offered to those students that had had difficulty at the end of last year. And we found that it was not anywhere near as successful as we would have liked it to be. Um, for for a lot of these students, simply being given the option to take an online course is is not necessarily the pathway to success. So in expanding the summer school program, what we're looking at is um to bring a staff member in to work one-to-one with these students or in small groups with these students um to be able to provide the um in-person support to help them get through um their their summer school courses. So it's not creating an entire program. It's really bringing in a staff member um who can um coordinate and and work um person-to-person with these students to um hopefully enhance their success.
Scott, is that for students who um are starting to get behind in credits or in jeopardy? Yes.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
And um, in terms of looking at maintenance supplies, you know, this year we added um things that we've, we've never had to add before, masks and wipes and hand sanitizer, um cleaning supplies. Um, one of the the, you know, the crazy things is the I I I won't necessarily call it price gouging, but the price gouging that we see here, all these you know, cleaning supplies and sanitizers, you know, the cost is just just going crazy because it's supply and demand. Um, now we, so looking ahead to next year, at least as we work through this, you know, budget preparation through, I would say, you know, hopefully not, you know, we'll we'll have a clear idea before we actually vote on the budget in May. But I think we have to at least assume that we're going to need to um provide some mitigation supplies. We don't know yet what resources schools will be receiving from the um stimulus bill that was just passed. Or as I imagine, will be passed by the end of this evening by the Senate and Congress. We know that there's money in there for schools, but we we haven't seen the details yet. So um, it would be nice to think that any of these costs just get removed from the budget altogether because they'll be um, we'll we'll find them elsewhere, whether it be from the federal level or the state level. Um, for technology, you know, we're we're already one-to-one. So we're not seeing the need to um invest in new technology. But what we have seen is the need to invest in new software platforms like Schoology, Zoom, Google Enterprise. These are software packages that are all about helping students connect, helping teachers to organize class materials so that whether you're instructing in person in a in a normal classroom, whether you're working in a hybrid model or whether you're working in a remote model, teachers and students have the tools they need to remain engaged. Um, I, again, you know, we 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 funded these for this year, and I think we need to anticipate that we'll likely need to um fund some of these for next year as well. Um, in terms of some personnel, so this one is a little tricky. Um, if we look at our nursing staff, we have one RN at the middle school. This, I'm looking in the third column here, currently what we have. We have one RN at the middle school. We have one RN at the high school. And this year, as a new position, we have an LPN, which provides support to both the middle and the high school. That's a grant-funded position. We also have a point-six administrative assistant in the high school. So essentially, the nurses secretary um in the high school is point-six. What we're proposing for next year is to maintain the LPN position and continue to fund it through a grant so that it would not be funded through the budget. Um, because we now have the LPN, they're able to pick up um the tasks of the point-six administrative assistant. So we'd be able to eliminate the point-six administrative assistant from the high school nurse's office, and the LPN would be able to fulfill that role. Keep that in mind. I'm going to go down to the next box, looking at pupil services. In the third column there, we currently have a um secretary in the middle school guidance office. We have a secretary in the high school guidance office, and we have two full-time special education secretaries within the district. What we would like to do is take the point-six administrative assistants in the high school nurse's office, that's, these are the yellow text, and add an additional point-four to create a new full-time administrative assistants for the guidance and special ed staff. Um, one of the things that we are finding, particularly in the guidance area, is the um the burden of new enrollments of 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 the the act of registering so many students. And we do have, you know, we're we're a more transient community. We have a lot more people coming and going. Um, the act of of unenrolling people, of re-enrolling people, of enrolling new um students is it takes an inordinate amount of time, particularly from the high school guidance secretary. The high school guidance secretary's position has 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 grown exponentially in terms of the um requirements for that position. Particularly, well, I I'll I'll say during the pandemic, but it's not just because of the pandemic. Um, because everything has moved um into the digital realm and all of our registrations are online. Um, you'd think that that would reduce the amount of work that our our secretary has, but in fact, it's increased um the amount of work and increased the obligation for the guidance secretaries to be on top of so many moving pieces for our students. And these are critical positions. Obviously, you don't want your guidance secretary missing something that could ultimately impact whether a student gets their application in on time to a um, you know, to a college or university that that may not care whether it came in late or not. They're just not going to accept it. So um so our our recommendation here is we will be making a recommendation, um not to add a full-time position, but to add a point-four um that would allow us to provide more support. Um, particularly, again, in the guidance area, and particularly for registration of new students so that we could um allow the guidance secretaries to focus more on the essential elements of what they're doing. Going down to the next level, um, we currently, I'm looking at the third column again. We have a full-time psychologist at the middle school. We have a full-time psychologist at the high school. We have a point-six budgeted for the, you know, two-point-six positions, which are kind of shared between the middle school and the high school. We were able to fill one of the point-six school psychologist positions. We have not been able to fill the second point-six psychologist position, although I have to tell you, it's a really a desperately needed position. Um, it, this is an area of significant shortage. Um, what our recommendation in the budget would be, will be to add an additional point-four in this case to make one of those positions full-time, not both of them, just one of them. Um, we're hoping that that will allow us to um attract a qualified candidate um or better than qualified, an excellent candidate. And I and I think more importantly, we know that this, you know, that the work of our psychologists has been particularly burdened with the increase in um challenges that students are facing and an increase in the um our obligations to our special needs students. And so um, we're both kind of that additional of a point-four um would allow us to um hopefully fill the position, but also, more importantly, to to meet the expanding needs, emotional and learning needs of our um our students. Um, in terms of of potential reductions, um you know, and one of our goals is to, you know, have the budget reflective of our decreasing enrollment. And um, I do think we have an opportunity in that we have a number of teachers retiring at the end of this year and um at least one unfilled position at the high school. And I I believe that we can um eliminate those positions without having to let anyone go. So we wouldn't be losing any of our our excellent staff. Um, and it would allow us to um to demonstrate some reductions to the budget. Um, I think we can do it without um negatively impacting any of our programs. Um, and again, it would be an opportunity to use, take advantage of retirements and unfilled positions to make that happen so that um we're not laying off any teachers. For CTE programming, I know that this has been a um, a a a lot of discussion we've had in in CTE programming, and particularly with the Woods programming. And if, just to bring you up to speed where we are with um with CTE. So we have um, most of our programs are are full-time programs. We made a couple of shifts this year, one in particular, we um kind of sunsetted the video production program and have have opened up a um our CERT EMT program, which has been wildly successful. Um, and our video programming was really kind of, the enrollment was decreasing as student interest moved away from video. So we really were able to take full advantage and create a really new thriving program of that. Um, the Woods program was one that I know we've talked a lot about as a board. And we currently are offering, um, we have two full-year courses worth of Woods programming as we speak. And my proposal, my recommendation is going to be to continue with that um that structure next year. And it's not that I don't want to move forward and expand that program. The challenge we're having right now is, and I think a lot of this is because we are in a hybrid model and you know, students aren't able to engage with the program as much as they certainly would under normal times. But we really don't have enough. We don't have enough students interested in moving on to the next level. We don't have enough students to um fill a full-time program right now. I think we need to be in the building. We need to um really get that program going before we can move forward and, and hire somebody to come in and do that full-time. I, I think would actually be a bit irresponsible to bring somebody in as a full-time teacher and then find that we just don't have the students to fill the program and we're eliminating the program or, you know, reducing the program later on. So I think that in order for the Woods program to see some growth, we're going to have to be back in the building and really start building it. We are going to continue to move it forward and so those students who are taking Woods this year will have an opportunity to continue with it. But again, we've, we've surveyed our students. We've, we've looked at where our students are going. And I do think it's partly enrollment decrease. It's partly just the nature of the program during the pandemic that I think it would be prudent to maintain the programming levels for this year. And then when we're back in the building, begin to, to look at it again to, to grow and move forward. And, and I think that's my last slide.
Yeah. I just want to bring to everyone's attention, we are running late right now. And I, I really want to get to Eva's financials. Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
I, I have one question, Scott. It's Sue. The, the bus contract, if we ever needed to, could we decrease a bus or are we locked in with that contract?
No, that's a good question, Sue. We can do, we actually decreased a bus. And Eva, I'll let you chime in. I know we decreased a bus in Hebron last year.
We, we decreased a bus in one in each town, so we removed three buses. And yes, we can do that based on that, but, but in speaking with the other three towns or schools, we've come to an understanding that I think we're going to stay status quo for this coming year, but if enrollment, I guess, if there's another enrollment projection that shows different, we, we might have to revisit that.
Right. I, I think, I think Sue, reducing the three buses last year puts us continue in a, in a good place. Like Eva said, if we saw a significant drop, like I would imagine that going into, not next year's, but the following year's budget, we're going to be seeing similar decreases, then we certainly would be looking at decreasing buses then as well.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, Scott. Now we're on to 11.4 financials.
All right. So the first one we're going to review is a proposed budget appropriation transfer. So during this COVID situation, we had to, out of the gate, I believe it was a special meeting that we had in July to get filters that were rated to take care of COVID air particles and have magnetic door closures installed in the middle school so that it would provide hand-free access to fire doors. And so if the fire alarm went off, the doors would close automatically and this would help eliminate the need for touching and, and cleaning as much during the day during the hybrid traveling back and forth to classes. During that time, we had a, a meeting and we moved money or utilized money in capital non-recurring. In light of the fact that the board no longer is looking to contract out for a night security, armed security guard, $41,000 has become available within the operating budget. So the recommendation is to make capital non-recurring whole. The second piece of this is, is that FEMA has denied our reimbursement requests. They're very specific on what they want to reimburse for, which is rightfully so. So we are not getting any reimbursement. So in light of the money freeing up and in light of the fact that it would be nice to make capital non-recurring whole so that that money can be utilized for the original goals of the district of the board. The proposed transfer is up for the board's discussion and/or approval. So what you are seeing is that on the second page, you see that the $45,797.36 was charged to two specific lines in capital non-recurring. I'm looking to move those expenditures from capital non-recurring into operating and putting them into, to, the one would be maintenance supplies and the other would be HVAC repair and maintenance for the magnetic door closures, if that's the name of the account. And I'm looking to do transfers from the security for the armed security guard. Our workers comp renewal came in less than anticipated. We had some money free up in the lease purchases and we had some equipment that didn't cost us as much as we anticipated. And in light of this, we are able to make capital non-recurring whole with these, with this available funding. So do you have any questions at this time?
I got a question. Did we receive the state money that was allocated to us? The $37,000, the whopping $37,000?
Yes. We received two different buckets of money. One was Corona relief funding and the other one was a, a stability. I forget what the initials of that one was, but something about educational stability. And all the funding that has been provided to us has been used up to buy PPE and/or software that was required to keep the students in remote learning and/or our hybrid situation.
As we discussed this in the facilities subcommittee, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the transfers from the capital non-recurring back to operating to make capital non-recurring whole.
I'll second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Can you explain that, please?
Explain what? I'm sorry.
No. Who made the motion? Was it Vinnie?
Yeah. So, so she took the money out of capital non-recurring and used it to pay for the, for the filters and the doors. And so now we're just transferring that expense back to the operating account so that capital non-recurring will be, will, will not see that decrease of $45,000.
Thank you. That, that's what I hoped it was saying. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any, so we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Not a yes as well. Transfer passes. All right.
All right. So now for the expenditure and revenue report. So this was actually prepared for last month's board event, for the meeting and I didn't get a chance to speak on it, but not much has changed. So I kept this portion as is. So there is a net, as of November 30th, there's a net favorable position of $484,908. This takes into account funds that have freed up due to our remote learning days for transportation, our spotty, if at best, athletic seasons that we're having currently and our reduced summer school, uh, out of district transportation. So in light of that, we also had some un, one-time un, unanticipated expenditures arise. So our AHM social workers, the rate that was provided during the budget season was a little bit lower than the true rate is. Our food service, due to the pandemic, we are still trying to increase participation rates, but there's a potential for $157,905 shortfall. Our kitchen steamer unfortunately broke and since the time of doing this, we needed to replace it because it was leaking. We had fire inspections that happened annually, but in this year, the fire inspections focused in on fire doors and dampers. And unfortunately, there, they are items that need to be replaced. We're trying to see if all the fire door items need to be replaced. The audit, the state of Connecticut has decided, or in their infinite wisdom during a COVID situation, to put out new audit requirements for the end of year reporting, which required additional hours for the auditors. That cost is what they were charging us, the $1,075. In addition, our water sewer rates are higher than proposed during the budget season. We were told that there, we would have an increase. Of course, the rate that was passed at the end was higher than what was communicated during the budget process. And then as is with everyone else in the state of Connecticut, the ever swaps race, rate increase, we're estimating a 15% estimate. So our unanticipated expenditures at this time are totaling $415,512.24. Now, having stated all of this, Mr. Leslie just informed us that Daco and the four districts are, we are working with Daco to try to come to a consensus on the remote learning days. As a for-profit company, they are trying to ensure that they break even so that we're not trying to enrich anyone. We're just trying to make sure that we have transportation services for the future. And we're hoping to come to an understanding of how better to narrow the loss for them. In addition to all of those, I just stated that FEMA, of course, is not reimbursing us for much. They approved $215. We were able to try to increase that $215 to about $1,000. Unfortunately, they will not pay out unless it's $2,500 or more. So I would have to put in another claim of which is very time-consuming and most likely will not garnish any more money. So at this point, we are not getting 75% of zero basically. So in light of that, we are using the two grants that we received and they are fully expended. So I'm just waiting for money to come in from the state of Connecticut. The capital improvement fund, there was no significant changes. The capital non-recurring fund, we are waiting for the closure, the closure of the DOT project to be officially closed so that the state of Connecticut can go through their audit process on that and, and advise us if, if and what the final dollar amounts are so that we know if anything's left in our contingency accounts. Pupil Services is still actively pursuing their IEPs and making sure that all POs are adjusted as necessary. And I believe that covers everything for the net projection. Do you have any questions for me on those?
Eva, this is Joe. I'm just curious as to why FEMA, obviously we're not the only district. Why, what, what kind of
So.
Items we were expensing or looking to get reimbursed?
So basically, when it comes to a disaster, they're, they're for natural disasters or disasters that happen that there's a a timeframe, a start and end timeframe to the disaster so that you can quantify the costs. What? So the $215 is all that they would allow us for, even though we had items for one-time expenditures that would have covered our distance learning, that would have covered our PPEs and/or cleaning supplies, including the filters and/or the hardware. But they were very particular. And when it came to cleaning, I had to be able to prove that I had people quarantining in the building, which we did. I could only claim a certain amount of the cleaning items for that first day that that person was quarantining. It, it took, it's, so this has been going on since July and we finally got the rejection in the middle of November. And so basically I was told that they won't pay me out for this time, but when I put in my next quarter of, of, which I have to provide them, again, all the same invoices, check numbers, all of that fun jazz and uploaded into their portal system that that was basically. And they're saying that, you know, that FEMA was one avenue of getting money and now I can go to the state for, to OPM to get any of the other money. At the time that I had looked, because of the, the, the rejection for getting covered by FEMA, OPM was closed at that point in time. I will look again and see if they have reopened now that there's some more federal funding coming down the pike to see if there's any way to salvage any of that money that has not been covered by the Corona relief funds that were awarded to us and the stabilization grant.
Okay. So they, they have a list. I assume they have a list of things that we can claim?
No, they're very particular. I can, I can actually share the rejection email that I, I received and it's a long chain of emails going between me. I have a project handler and somebody else in the federal government that is actually making the calls.
Well, all, all I'm asking, I guess, is, is, I'm sure you're doing everything possible, but I mean, do we need, should we, you know, I remember the conversation before and, and, and I think maybe we just need to get our, our, our state, our state representatives, our, our, you know, national ones. Chris Murphy and Courtney and all these other people. If FEMA is not giving us what we should be entitled to, then that's a problem. So that's all I'm asking is that.
Yeah, that, that's what, I'm not sure necessarily, again, so they're, they're again for a specific start and end time, kind of a disaster. So if there's a hurricane, a flood, a fire, some, something in, in that, even a blizzard for that, for that matter of fact. Because they're, they're used to reimbursing municipalities for somebody for overtime, for equipment that needed to be in, your diesel. There, there's quantifiable areas that they can reimburse for. And I believe that's what they're charged with doing. When it comes to PPEs and/or cleaning supplies, they feel that it, they shouldn't be giving us our cleaning supplies or funding us for all of it. They should be giving us a specific time set. And this is their way, and I'm not, we're not the only district that was not reimbursed. We just happen to be regional where some municipalities work with their local boards of educations and we're able to give them some more additional funding. But I know specifically of two other districts that received nothing also. And those were local school boards, so not regional school boards. So it's, it's frustrating, I guess, because here we were led to believe that we would get funding and in reality, that didn't happen.
I got you. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Eva.
All right. So on to the food service, I believe is next. So as I was stating, we, working with Witten's, we came up with a projection of about $157,000 shortfall. The new staff, the food service folks are wonderful in trying to come up with creative ways to get better participation. They're working with, it, it, just, just, just creative souls. As part of the seamless summer operation, which we are operating under until June 30th of 2020, we're able to feed community, uh, students and/or children who are 18 years and younger. So they actually reached out to AHM and are working with our daycare program to feed them breakfast. They are coming up with creative ways of reaching out to at-home families that are remote learning to ensure that people have the ability to feed their students. There, it's just, it's truly amazing to, to watch these two ladies in action. Kate and Darcelle are wonderful in terms of just being creative, energetic and wanting to feed kids. So I'm hoping that everyone is, is feeding their students or allowing students to, to come pick up meals. or allowing students to to come pick up meals. Um, we are feeding them on Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. And currently with our, uh, special ed student population coming back into the building, they're actually doing, uh, pre-ordered meals within the building so that, um, you know, who's, who's eating and that our children are getting fed inside for breakfast and lunch also. Um, currently, I have taken the month of November and the month of October's invoices out of operating because out of the fifty one thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars that's available, um, some of that is still student, um, liability, it's a liability on our part because some of these are still available student, um, balances. So I can't go down below that because if the student would want to get reimbursed or if the family requested reimbursement, we would have to give, um, that money back to the family. So at this point, um, we are doing our best to ensure that, um, we're doing whatever we can to garnish the reimbursement that is being provided to us and to try to increase the participation. Are there any questions on the food service?
Uh, Joe here, Eva, I have a couple, so is, this is sort of like the bus contract, isn't it? I mean, we have, uh, entered an agreement with a, a company, nobody expected, uh, the pandemic. We have to feed our children, but would this not be considered a disaster? I mean, we could be reimbursed by either COVID. Um, because a hundred and fifty seven thousand, you're saying that's a, that's a, that's a year number, correct? That's what you're projecting right now?
That's over projected. Yes, that's going to be the loss for the year. And we're trying to negate that loss, so we're trying to, so again, it's estimated. So with every meal that, uh, a child gets served, that number becomes lower. So when it comes to USDA funding, that's basically what this is. This is another federal government funding. Something came through the pike last night, um, that part of what the Senate and the House of Representatives are working on, um, might allow for additional funding in reimbursement of this. But yes, so this is a statewide problem. We, um, so this, this, the state has to apply for waivers themselves directly from the USDA. Based on everything that has been done by the state of Connecticut, um, we're still waiting on word to see if there'd be any more reimbursement funds available or if they can increase the amount of reimbursement because they realize that everybody, um, there's actually a coalition, what will our children lose coalition? And they're actually doing public service announcements um, to try to help educate why all the children should be eating within the schools to to help us help ourselves, basically, um, to keep our programs afloat and or, um, whether they're self-operated or contracted out like we are. Um, just to make sure that kids are getting fed, that they're getting the proper nutrition and it's available to everyone, it doesn't matter whether you need it right now or you don't need it right now. Um, all children are being, um, fed. And so, yes, people are working behind the scenes and trying to get the federal government to hear our cries for help. Um, I just don't know how quickly that'll come.
So are, I guess, as we as RAM, I mean, are we advocating to to somebody in Washington?
Yes.
If it's, if we're past the state level, I mean, it sounds like we need to be getting some people, I'm sure they're already on it, I mean, you, you said this is a, this is a state problem, but I mean, it's, that's a, that's a significant amount of money in a, in a pandemic to, for us to just, you know, have to eat. Uh, so I, uh, no pun intended, but, um, you know, uh, I I would hope that we're looking at that, that's all.
Yes, yes, we're doing everything we can, both CASBO, CAPS, Cabe. Um, um, they all make up the what will our children lose coalition snack, um, which is the food service people themselves, um, so the self-operated food service people. Um, they're all trying to work together. Um, like I said, there was something that came through that said that some of the funding might actually go to support children's meals. So I'm hoping that we will have more information on what the specifics are in that regard and hopefully that some of it will come our way.
It's, on, on that note, I mean, you, you've, you've told us this before, but I, and I'm sure Scott Leslie is working on this, but should, should there be a broader sense of, 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 of public, uh, announcing that we, we need, because of the more children, the more parents that participate in this program that maybe are unaware of it, it, it helps us financially, right, by reducing our, our, our costs.
Correct.
So if these, if these kids start buying lunches and and breakfasts, maybe there's something that we should do on a, on a, on a higher level as far as, um, uh, uh, you know, newspaper article, it announcing, you know, letting people know that we, that, um, that this is available to them and then they should, and the benefits of why we should encourage them to participate. Maybe, I, I hope we, we should look out, look into that.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll have to agree with Joe, I was going to mention that as well. This is just, yeah, another topic that I think would be a great topic to have, you know, even verbally with the community. Um, you know, there could be a majority of the community that's like, well, we don't need it, so we're not going to take it. But honestly, they need to understand that if they take it, they're actually helping us and helping them at, you know, because it's their tax dollars at the end of the day here.
Correct.
So I, I, I think that that's, it's, it's key, um.
So I do know that we put articles into the Rambler and the Raptor for the middle school. Um, so I know on a weekly basis that comes out. I know that Scott himself has written home to families, um, in in that regard. Um, but maybe you are right, maybe it's more of a, a forum kind of discussion, um, awareness piece as opposed to a written piece.
Yeah, I, I don't think that the nice letters that Scott puts out is telling us that we're in the hole, hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. So, you know, I, I know sometimes we don't want to be that brutally honest, but, um, the letters are, here's, here, the, this is available to the community, but they're really not telling the other side of the story, I think it needs to be told now.
Any other questions, um?
I, I guess, Eva, do you, um, do you anticipate any relief through, you know, that coalition or that group that's kind of behind what will our children lose and all of that work? Are, are there, um, is there still any hope of regaining money? Yeah, I know, I know some of, some of where I am, it's the same thing, we didn't get what we expected or hoped for.
Um, my guess is that yes, because, um, we're making enough noise for people to hear and we're only one state. And my guess is that this is a nationwide problem too. So I, I firmly believe that the USDA or the federal government will hear our pleas and will fund more.
And and the latest news as of two minutes ago is that our, um, commissioner of education may be at that, appointed at the national level, federal level, so we'll see. That, that could not hurt us in, in these kinds of situations.
Right, hopefully he remembers us when he gets the big.
I know, I know. And it's, it's not definite, but it's just two minutes ago and some of the things that just popped up, so we'll see.
Okay. Is there any, any other comments or questions, we really do need to move on.
Right, last is just student activity, there really is, um, no major updates there. Um, I, there is a new format, so hopefully everyone likes the new format of the report to, that people can understand the ins and the outs there. Um, and I believe I covered all of mine, thank you very much.
Thank you, Eva.
Great, thank you, Eva.
Okay, um, we are, we are running late and we still have executive session, so I am going to propose that, um, there is a summary for the, um, subcommittee, um, meetings and that if anybody has any questions, that they can refer to a subcommittee member for, for, um, information. So, um, is it okay that I skip through the reports to get, to get through the meeting?
Agreed.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, so we are moving on to, um, public comment. Any public comments? Okay, I'm not hearing any at this time. Um, informational items, we've got the calendar of events and student discipline. Any questions about any of that? Scott, did you have anything to, um, to share?
Um, not right now, Stephanie.
Pretty straightforward, okay, okay. All right, moving on to executive session, or we'll be discussing acting superintendent's contract. Um, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session, this is Kathleen.
On a second?
Second, Ben.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much, um, we'll see, we'll go back in the public session after executive and, um, board will move into our discussion which.
Stephanie, I'll go in and move in.
Okay.
Great.